Rob is online, so we can get started. Okay, welcome, everybody, to the April 29th, 2024 Grants Pass City Council Workshop. Have a little bit of feedback? Maybe it's better now. Okay, let's get started with Caveman Pool, and Josh Hopkins is our Parks Superintendent presenting.
So, we're here today to discuss the Caveman Pool project and go over the cost overview, as well as the next steps. Subject in summary: The city has received cost estimates for two design options for the Caveman Pool project, and staff is seeking direction on how council would like to proceed. This is in relationship to council goals of maintaining, operating, and expanding our infrastructure to meet community needs by appropriately maintaining an existing capital asset. For the background, on December 4th, 2023, City Council reviewed amenities to be included in the cost estimating for the Caveman Pool project. At this meeting, council provided direction on several features to include and requested two design options be considered. February 6th, 2024, Robertson Sherwood Architects, PC RSA, provided cost estimates to the city. On February 9th, 2024, staff submitted a memo to City Council detailing the cost estimates, potential saving options, potential funding mechanisms, and potential partnership options with the Grants Pass YMCA. For the base design, price amenities include a parking lot, bathhouse, two pool stainless steel vessels, water play features in the activity pool, a three-fourths meter diving board, and water slide. The cost estimate came back for this design at $10,242,394. We do have Scott Skalarcheck of Robertson Sherwood Architect attending virtually if City Council has questions regarding cost estimates that we'll be going over. And then with the base design, with the additional amenities council wanted cost estimates on, there was a request to look at increasing the pool depth of 12 feet six to provide an additional dive platform. That came back at an estimate of increase of $41,000. A two-meter dive platform was also requested. It had an estimated increase of about $171,000. Additional drop side feature added into the pool had an additional cost estimate of about $343,000. And the half-court basketball court came back at just a little south of $60,000. Pool heating, switching over to an all-electric boiler system, had an additional cost of $5,131. Or additionally, looking at the pool heating to be a heat pump chiller system, that had an additional cost of $14,332. Overall, the increased amount for the council add-on options was between $619,997 to $629,128. That difference is within the pool heating options right there. The cost estimate itself ranges between $10,862,391 to $10,871,592. RSA did identify a list of cost-saving options for this. Many of these options do call for moving to separate fixtures, furnitures, and equipment packages, FFEs. This does not eliminate the entirety of these costs. It removes them from the direct construction cost. We would go out and source these on separate packages, and it would eliminate any sort of contractor markup along with that. And then, with that, we did identify bathhouse savings of $243,606. Site work identified savings of $20,654. Parking lot savings with a potential of $49,815. We are still evaluating a cost-share partnership with the District VII School District for the parking lot, you know, and that still needs to be explored. For the pool identified savings, two came to mind. One was moving the competitive swim features to the FFE, and that estimated to remove $34,287 off, but we would still have to go back out for those costs as well. And then switching the pool vessel to a more traditional shot creek instead of the stainless steel, this was the largest cost-saving option out there, it came out at $896,353. Overall, potential savings to decrease $1,244,715 out of the project if we incorporate all of these saving options. Going on with the cost implications, RSA does recommend budgeting for an additional 25% markup of direct construction cost for the other soft cost. This would be your design fees, SDCs, utility connections, permitting, and things like that. It comes out to increasing the cost by $2,716,000. Grand total range, if council was to choose the option without incorporating any of the cost-saving measures, as well as all of the pool amenities, you're looking at $13,578,391 to $13,587,592. For current resources, we have had allocations talked about from the ARPA at 1.2 million, the URA agency at 5 million. LB6393 has a current cash balance of about $140,937, bringing our total available for continuing this project to $6,340,937. As a whole, we need to look at potentially coming up with $7,246,655 if we were not to incorporate any of the cost-saving options and then choose the option where council's add-ons are incorporated in. Funding options for consideration: There are a few options available to council, one of which would be to just increase allocations from ARPA or the URA. This would decrease resources for other projects, and the URA does require a hearing. ARPA may have timeline issues as well. The funds need to be obligated by December 31st of 2024, and I believe need to be spent completed by 2026 December 31st. We also have the option of doing an inter-fund loan with the city. It may not be the most viable option with the city's current budget conditions, as well as other obligations, other departmental loans we may be needing in the future. And the next option would be a voter-approved general obligation bond. It may be the most viable option if council chooses to decide to cover the full amount of this project. With that, you're looking about a two-year process, and your ARPA allocations would have been expired by then to go out for the bond and everything. It would be general fund-backed, that could cause potential impacts for other loans backed by the general fund, like the water treatment plant loans. And then timeline considerations with other bonds, levies, and taxes on future election cycles, and again, the ARPA expenditure dates. Another thing for council to consider about doing a bond for this project, whether it's for the $7.2 million shortfall or the entirety of the project, is the feasibility of the community supporting a general obligation bond for what is currently a 70-day seasonal outdoor pool. For those bond rates, I did work with the finance director, and he ran some tentative numbers. If we're assuming 20 years at 5% with the fixed amount of $13.6 billion, that would basically be all of the options council liked and none of the cost-saving measures, we'd be looking at the voters approving an increase of between 29 and 1/2 cents to 30 cents per thousand on their tax rate. And, you know, our community did not approve a 10% increase or 10 cent increase for police and fire services not too long ago. Additionally, if the general obligation bond route is what council would like to choose, many parks jurisdictions, when they get to this point, look at other projects that could be incorporated into the bond to cast a wider net. It would be probably in our best interest to consider projects like renovating the skate park to building a whole new skate park, other infrastructure needs, or potential park development in some of our natural reserve areas. We do additionally have some partnership considerations. Schools District VII, we've talked about having a cost-share agreement for the parking lot. The parking lot itself's current estimate is $681,232. We have not engaged the school beyond just continuously speaking about the project and having them say that, yeah, they're still interested in working towards a partnership on building that parking lot. Partially, the reason we haven't continued that discussion is we're waiting for this direction with the council, so we know what numbers we're going to be talking about with the school district. The other option that has came about is with the YMCA partnership for a new YMCA indoor aquatic facility. The YMCA previously presented this option at the March 14th, 2022 City Council workshop. Examples of city YMCA partnerships on pooling resources for funding, ongoing costs and land donations were a part of that presentation. The YMCA is still interested in pursuing a partnership and developing a new facility in the coming years. And speaking with YMCA CEO Jay Berry, who is in the audience, as well as the YMCA Board President Brad Converse, you know, they've talked about making a new multi-level facility that could potentially have enough room for workforce housing and like a full wraparound of wellness services in partnership with other community organizations. The Parks Advisory Committee looked over these options at the April 11th meeting, and the general consensus was in support of evaluating the partnership option with the YMCA and potentially working on some other use for the Caveman Pool facility after that building has been created. And I believe Jay Berry and Brad Converse are available if you guys have questions for them after the presentation. So what we need direction on at this point is which pool design City Council would like to proceed with, which, if any, cost-saving options City Council is interested in, which funding options City Council is interested in pursuing. Would City Council like to fund the shortfall amount of $7.2 million, or are you leaning more towards funding the full amount, which would free up those resources that have been allocated for other projects? And then is City Council interested in pausing the Caveman Pool project to review the feasibility of partnering with the Y on a new facility in a separate location? Call to action is at council's discretion. Alternatives would be to move to additional workshop. And with that, I'm here for questions.
Thanks, Josh. Council, what questions do you have? Go ahead, Rick.
Thank you, Josh. Has there, beyond the parking lot, has there been additional discussion with District VII on participating in the pool cost as well?
No, the discussions have mainly been regarding the parking lot. The pool, in its current use from the school district, is very limited, so there hasn't been any discussion about getting them to partner in on the actual construction cost of the facility.
So the council does have the opportunity to make that recommendation, we participate with District VII, at least on initial inquiry?
Yeah, we can make those inquiries if that's what you guys are interested in doing.
Thank you.
Joel.
So I, is my impression that the Y administered the Caveman Pool the last couple of years?
Yes, the YMCA has been who's operating our Caveman Pool since the 80s.
Okay, could I ask them a question? What I'd like to ask is use of the pool, and I know that the pool has some maintenance problems, so I'm not concerned about that, because that would be fixed under this, but what is the use of the pool? What are the limitations of replacing a new facility on that site in terms of future use versus another facility that perhaps you, the Y and the city, could collaborate with?
Yes, Brad Converse, Board President for the YMCA. Regarding the use, it varies. You know, some days you'll have 100 people there, often less, sometimes more. It's not, you know, there's plenty of times that our staff would go down there, and there'd be a handful of people in the pool. It's used a lot for lap swimming by, really, a lot of people use it for that. And then on the nice days in the afternoon, a lot of families and kids are using it. A lot of birthday parties happen there. One of the challenges that we have is if the AQI goes above, I believe, 100, we can't open. And in the past years, that's been pretty consistent, starting in, you know, as early as end of July, and throughout August, we run into that problem with an outdoor pool, and we'd have that problem with an outdoor pool anywhere in Southern Oregon. As far as the facility, and, you know, full disclosure, I'm on the Parks Committee as well, so I've discussed this from the city side pretty extensively. And the site itself relatively, you know, it's great for what it's been, and trying to recreate that on the footprint provided is, you know, it's doable with the numbers provided, but we, you know, I was on the pool committee as well, and you're looking at, well, it's a short-term window that we can have the pool running. You can't really, it's hard to get lifeguards up until school gets out, and so that puts you mid-June to open realistically. And then, smoke cuts you off, so, well, we'd like to go later, let's talk about putting a roof over top. Once you talk about putting a roof over the top, well, now you need to get more, you know, a dehumidifier, and it increases the cost quite a bit to do that. And then if you're going to do a roof over top, well, let's maybe look at a new location that we could do a bit larger facility. And then when you're looking at that, you're jumping at the cost more, let's look about bringing partners in. That's where the conversation with the YMCA kind of started. And then, you know, YMCA, speaking now, speaking on behalf of the YMCA, we're looking for all sorts of partners as well. Salem recently built a new YMCA. Eugene built a new YMCA. There's, as we presented in 2022, there's countless examples of YMCA's and cities partnering together to build something amazing.
So then, how would you contrast a new caveman pool in the season of use with, versus collaborating with the Y on a jointly ventured pool, and their season of use, and the possibility for our community resource?
Sure. So running the numbers based on, you know, the $11 million, not counting the additional, for the roughly 70-day season, you're looking at roughly $8,000 a day. That is over 30 years, that is the cost of the pool. And so, you know, we don't have any days where we made $8,000 at the pool, so it's, you know, and the city's already spending $80,000 a year on it in terms of equipment. So recreating what's been there, you know, I grew up, you know, I live right next to the pool. One of the reasons my wife wanted me to get on the Parks Committee was so that I could save the pool. That was her ulterior motive there. But then, and you're looking at in 2019, it was five, $6 million, probably doable, and then costs have skyrocketed, and so we've kind of logically leapt away from that. Whereas, building a new facility, so Eugene, let's see, Salem built theirs for about $26 million. Eugene built theirs for about $48 million. Not small, you know, not small beans there. I mean, it's pretty expensive, but there's a lot of partners. And so, by no means would be, we'd be expecting the city to put up that kind of money by partnering with the YMCA. The city could use some other lands it might have, or figure out other partnerships that we could explore that would free up the ARPA or URA funding to build a facility that, you know, our YMCA is 40 years old right now. We're bursting at the seams, we just crossed 10,000 members. We, you know, we love it where we're at, but we're also in an old building that we need more space. And so there's a lot of precedent for the city partnering with the Y on a new facility.
So then, the season of use with the Y would be, what, year-round?
Year-round, yeah.
Versus seasonal, and then it wouldn't be affected by smoke?
No, no. I don't believe we've ever had to shut down the Y internally for smoke. You know, we have filters, and, you know, when we're looking at doing construction, there's all sorts of possibilities. You know, we, we've talked about ideas, before COVID started, we had plenty of ideas of what we might build, because we were kind of moving in that direction, and then COVID happened, and it shut a lot of that conversation down. But when we're looking at a new facility, you know, the sky's the limit. You could build an indoor pool that has easy access to outdoor areas. We don't know. We're, we're coming into this looking to partner in terms of, you know, there's a problem to solve. We believe we can be part of the solution, but we're definitely not trying to say the Y wants to build exactly this and help us do it. It's, we see how we could benefit the, the community with the new YMCA.
Counselor King, to go back to usage, last season, the YMCA reported, because they report this stuff to us at the end of the year, they reported 138 average attendance, so it came out to about 8,500 people for the season using the pool. They operate 70 days, of which they were able to be open 62 days out of that year. The previous year, the pool usage was about the same. Back in the early, or back, you know, 2017, 2018, usage really peaked around 18,000 people a year. And since then, whether it's COVID, or I kind of think that putting in a splash park decreased that, too. Things like that have steadily been decreasing the usage of the current Caveman Pool facility. And part of their usage, that's not, you know, 18,000 unique individuals, that's people that are going there frequently, multiple times a week. So like that 138 from last season average, a lot of those are just repeat visitors to make up that 8,500 total.
So last year, if I understood you correctly, it operated 70 days out of the year?
It operated 62 out of their 70 days that they have available to operate.
62 days, okay.
Are there other questions?
Valerie? I do just have a couple of questions on the cost-saving page. I know that, obviously, one of the options was to go to a traditional shot creek, which is similar to what we have kind of there, but I'm going to assume that we have to go back out for a different design, correct?
I don't believe so. Scott Skalarcheck's online, he can further answer that, but my understanding is we would basically be building the same style of pools with the same footprint, just switching out the pool vessel median itself.
Okay, and then the other question was?
That is correct, Josh.
Okay. All right, thank you. And then, I noticed this, competitive swim features to FFE, and I should know, I know that FFE is coming, you know, but I'm just looking at it going, what in the heck is FFE?
Yeah, so that's the furnishing fixtures and equipment packages. So as I mentioned, a lot of the cost savings around the bathhouse or things like that are involved, and instead of having the contractor go out and source the equipment for those areas, the city would remove that from the direct contracted cost and construction costs and source it separately ourselves through different RFP processes or vendors. And the idea is it decreases those by, you know, 10%, 15%, whatever the contractor markup would have been, but we still incur those later on down the road, just not as a part of the direct construction cost.
Okay, and what exactly are the competitive swim features? I'm just, I'm lap, I mean--
That'd be like the blocks and things like that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Brian?
Yeah, thanks, Josh. A couple of questions regarding the, the heating systems. There's a couple options there for different heating sources for the pool. Was there, I thought we had a discussion at some point about analysis on cost savings for the different heating sources, because, you know, they use fuel. So do we, do we have any sort of analysis on the, like, the life cycle for the different heating sources?
Not at the moment. I believe we were planning to incorporate that in working with Energy Trust of Oregon during the Phase II side of things.
Okay, so we'll save that discussion for another day. I also had a question about contingency. RSA is recommending a 25% markup of construction costs. I know for the water treatment plant, our contingency is significantly less, if any. I was wondering if Jason might be able to, are we a 5% contingency, or what do we add on the water treatment plant project for contingency?
I want to say that we're carrying about 7% on every item, but that number will come down. It's also a much bigger budget, and so because of that, I think that they're, they're better carrying a smaller contingency. I can't speak to all of what the 25% here, I'm not familiar with it, it looks like Brad.
Well, and Scott, could you add to this, but my understanding is that the, the contingency in this project includes all the soft cost, engineering, you know, all of the permitting, which I'm thinking in the water project, that's a separate, that's not part of the contingency. So that, that is one sort of terminology difference that we should probably bear in mind.
That's correct. That 25% is a soft cost markup, so that's all the things outside of direct construction. I was putting in my list a contingency of 5% in the project.
Okay, so is that, is that 25% just kind of like a standard markup, or is that a calculated amount for this specific project?
A little bit of both. I mean, it's, remember, we see a lot of public projects. I think in the memo that Josh reminded you included my, my summary of costs, and in there I had a breakdown list of what I was anticipating in that 25% markup.
Great, thank you.
What is the longevity difference between the shot creek and the stainless steel?
I believe they're about the same, 50 some-odd years. It's just sometimes you end up in situations where it's not necessarily a longevity issue, it's more of just a higher cost of maintenance issue with the shot creek. We'd want to keep the pool pretty much filled and things like that. And then the stainless steel vessels have been around for quite a while, but not like 100 years, like, you know, typical pools type of a thing, so. But longevity-wise, I think we'd be kind of looking at the same, if not the concrete's probably longer life. It's just there is more cost over that life for various maintenance items.
More than $900,000?
Depends on how you want to view the future.
So I just wanted to make sure I heard you right. Did you just say that if we do the shot creek, we have to keep the pool filled?
We would likely want to have water in the pool to some degree year-round. It helps protect the vessel itself. It's one of the things that, you know, we traditionally haven't been doing to our current pool, which leads to decay of, yeah. Go ahead, Scott.
If the, if the, if the pool is, has a plaster finish on it, then yes, you'd want to keep water in year-round, so that way the plaster isn't cracked. Now, you could go with a painted concrete pool, that's what City E.G. has at their Amazon pool facility, but there's implications to that in terms of maintenance, just because you, a little bit more regular maintenance, repainting, resealing of the pool.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions? No more. Brian, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I had a question for Brad, actually. So regarding, you know, a future Y, and I know that this is all super preliminary, but what are we talking about, like, cost-wise, timeline-wise, to the nearest 5 million, to the nearest year?
Sure. So as I mentioned, cost-wise, just looking at what's happened in Oregon, which, you know, normally don't have good data like that, which is great. So Salem, smaller Y, they, you know, just downtown, 26.5 billion, I believe, and then Eugene Y is 75,000 square feet, and theirs was 48.6 million, I believe. So when it comes to the exact cost, you know, we're flexible, we're going to be looking at who are our partners. You know, like you mentioned, whether there's housing involved, whether there is, you know, a partnership with local healthcare providers to add more physical therapy onsite. It's going to fluctuate, whether it's, you know, I could foresee it being in the 25 to 50 range, depending on what we build. So I'm not going to lock down much tighter than that, but I don't think it's going to go above 50. I'm pretty sure it's not going to be below 25. And then, sorry, as far as timeline goes, you know, we, sooner's better than later. As we've seen with the pool, the cost went from 5 to 6 million to, we're now at 13, and that happened in a few years. So at the YMCA, we're ready to move. Like, we're not like, you know, move from the facility right now, but we're ready to move in terms of, we have a great board, we have people on, on the board that have development experience, we have great interest from the board in making this happen. So, you know, if the city's looking to partner with us, we're going to move very quickly in terms of, you know, we'll plan on going up to Eugene within the next month and exploring what they've done there and learning, you know, we've already talked to them, and they have provided great feedback on what worked for them, what not to do, what we should do. So, you know, we won't be reinventing the wheel too much. And, you know, at the latest, I'd like to be in by 2030, but, you know, if we can make 2027 happen, great. I mean, it, we're, we're ready to move quickly.
Thanks.
Joel?
So I just had another question for you. That was the total cost in Eugene and in the other places. When the Y Director previously came to us, and it was in an agenda-setting meeting, the majority of that money was coming from partners that were not the city. And the, the cost to the city was much less than what it would take to build the Caveman Pool. So in Eugene and in those other places, a lot of times, they build it without any city money, is my understanding, because they, that's what the Y does. They have a national organization that supports it with a partnership. And so as we look at the dollars, and we try to compare with what we're going to possibly invest in the Caveman Pool for 70 days worth of swimming versus having the Y take the lead and, and manage it for a 360-day season, I would guess the cost would be less than what it would be for that, but it would, it would, I would just like your thoughts on that.
Yeah, absolutely. So YMCA's, you know, Salem YMCA, they got $4 billion from the state to help with theirs. There's a lot of funding out there, between private-- There's a lot of funding out there between private and government options that a lot of those funding sources like to see collaboration. So they want to see support from the city. They want to see support from nonprofits. And then they're ready to help with grant money for it. So, you know, we're not going to be turning down money from anyone. But when it comes to the city, whether we're doing a partnership in terms of property or, you know, we're, there's a lot of different directions we could go with it that we're, we're not expecting to do, you know, a $13 million bond to the city necessarily to, to make it happen. We're looking to not close the doors, but we're not. Our assumption would be that it would be less expensive to the city to partner with the YMCA for a new large facility that has a longer season than it would be to go ahead and push this pool through.
Valerie?
I don't know. I mean, a lot of our funding and things we've talked about has been in the URA, in the urban renewal district. And, but then when we were looking at Allenwood, at one point in time, that was not. So does that make any difference, whatever, as to where it's placed? Just curious in terms of funding.
So Allen Creek Reserve is not in the URA district. Neither is the Allenwood Reserve. And so those funding sources, if we were to partner with the YMCA on a project, would then just be reallocated to other projects located on the URA list or ARPA list type of a thing.
Other questions? Not at the moment. All right. Counsel, are you wanting to have a discussion about the pool before we move forward with learning more about URA and ARPA? Or do you want to wait? Joel?
Well, I'd like to give some direction to city staff to explore the options with the Y in terms of land and, and possible funding. And, because right now, it's, everything's kind of, I wouldn't call it vague, but we need, I think we need more, more information before we make a decision. There's obviously some great advantages to partnering, cost-wise and both, and facility-wise. But we need to, I think, have a little more information before we move forward on which option we choose.
Brian?
We've been talking about pools for a while now, ever since I was on Parks Committee. And we all know that the current pool is falling apart, so something has to be done. Originally, the Parks Committee recommended, you know, after their discussions, that we rebuild on the same site. We wanted further feedback, so we had the Pool Task Force that reaffirmed that direction. They also said that it shouldn't, as, as Joel likes to say, it doesn't have to be one or the other. It can be both. And I think that the task force recommended that we do rebuild on the current site now. And then after that, we look into potentially partnering with the Y for a larger facility on the other side of town. Because our town is large enough to, you know, have, we have enough people that, to have both of those facilities at this point. And we already do have both of those facilities. So, so going from having two facilities down to one facility doesn't really make sense to me. Only partnering with the Y, which I am absolutely not against, but only doing that option removes the ability for families and kids in the core of the city to easily travel to the pool. Having it out across the river makes it a lot more difficult where you have to drive essentially to the pool unless you're very brave on your bike. I think that, I think that there's actually a lot to discuss here today, so I'm not too keen on moving to the next topic right now. With regards to the season of the pool, yeah, it's like a, it's like a 70-day season. If we're going to build a new pool, I would absolutely advocate for us opening that pool in the shoulder seasons, so it does get more use. We have the ability to recruit lifeguards that are not going back to college, because I know that that has been a big objection, is that all lifeguards are going back. But you can get your lifeguard license down to age 15. So in theory, we could partner with the high school and they could have, or the Y, and they could have a class to train up lifeguards that are not going back to college that live in the community year-round. So I think that that is a piece that we can, we can get around. I passed out a sheet to you that has some options for funding the gap. Those include reallocating funds from other parks projects that have not yet been built. I am an advocate for maintaining our current facilities before we build new parks facilities, because if we can't maintain what we have, we absolutely should not be developing new parks. Caveman Pool is also basically our only parks facility that families can go to without having issues with the homeless. So that's nice for people. There's also an opportunity for us to do some reallocations from ARPA and URA. We haven't had any discussions about looking into some sort of fundraising or donations to cover part of this gap, which I think that there would be, I think there is opportunity in the community to have some resources come from that mechanism, whether it's Asante or All Care or private donations. We haven't talked about any sort of grants. So I think that there is a lot of opportunity for us to fund this gap with these mechanisms. I don't think going out for a bond is a good idea. I don't think, I think that's a total waste of time. But I do think that if we have the wherewithal that we can make this project happen with the resources we have, and then we can talk about partnering with the Y on a, on a second facility out on the other side of town, so all of our residents can have, you know, at least maintain the services that we're providing now with, with regards to aquatics. So I'll stop there for the moment. Thanks.
Joel?
So I don't want to get into a long debate today, but the Parks Committee, who I'm the liaison to, also supported rebuilding the caveman pool till they looked at the facts. And almost unanimously, in fact, I think it was unanimous at the last Parks meeting, they said, we need to switch priorities in terms of pool and start working with the Y. It doesn't mean that in the future we couldn't rebuild or build a caveman pool on this side, but, but we need to get a facility that serves the community and is efficient with the dollars. The other thing, the Y presently gets vouchers from All Care to serve the homeless for showers, 360 days a year, not 70. And, and, and they have incentive programs for low-income folks that join the Y. It's an asset to the community. And last off, you know, we talked about one facility on both sides. Yes, that would, that's a good long-term goal. Whether we build that side first, the south side first, or the north side first, I think comes down to some economics and some community values of, of having a, a facility in place that would really be an asset. So, and, and I don't think we, right now, I don't think we want to make a decision because we need more information. And I would like staff to, to work with the Y to see what that option looks like, because it may turn out that maybe we want to invest in the, in the caveman pool after we look at that. But I need that information before we move ahead.
Dwayne is online, and he said he's also interested in getting more information on partnering with the Y. Valerie?
Well, I will say, I've always loved Caveman Pool and loved the fact that it's in my northeast part of town, which doesn't have a lot of parks, other than that's always kind of been the highlight, is having that. But I also look at the realities that we face now that are a whole lot different than they were when I grew up and when, you know, we didn't used to have the fires like we have now. And I don't see them stopping. And I, I just look at, if you're going to invest in something, it doesn't make a lot of sense to put that much money into something that can't be used more often. So I know, based upon what I've seen in the city, I cannot see, I mean, we, obviously, the money is not there, so we have to partner with someone. It's not, it's just, I don't see the money being there. So I am interested in looking into partnering with the Y, just for the common sense fact that this community cannot afford to put that kind of money in something that doesn't get that kind of use. And so I'm looking forward to getting more information about the partnership with the Y.
Rick?
I'm also interested, if there's any statistics showing where the population of young kids are located. I know we raised our two kids in our house, but we're still living here, and they're no longer here. And I'm wondering if the population of, let's say, the pool kids has moved south of the river, and that would be worth consideration also. I guess I'm not ready to make a decision today because I think there's a lot of information out there that needs to be forthcoming. Thank you.
Brian?
Well, staff had a lot of questions for us up here. I think it's safe to say that, you know, the Parks Committee has been on both sides of this issue now. So, you know, I don't know how much, how much weight to give, to give those opinions, because it really comes down to whatever seven people or so happen to be on the Parks Committee at any given time. Rick, the, I mean, you can just look at where the schools are located. I think we have, Gary, do we have five elementary schools this side of the river and two on the other? Something like that. But, I mean, it's a pretty even distribution. I don't think, you know, there's still a lot of kids on this side of town. So I don't think there's been a huge shift, although, you know, clearly, the Redwood area is growing, so there's probably a little bit of a shift that way. And we do have the money to do this. We really do. It's, it's there. We just have to make the decision and figure out the best way to do it. So to say that we don't have the resources to do this is not true. But it's, it would, it would take some, you know, decision-making to make that happen. So, and I do think we can do both, Joel. Like, and I think that the, the shorter-term project, the one that's easier to get done, is the one that we already have designed for, we already have costs for. And that project can get all wrapped up and done and operational before, you know, the Y is even ready to get a shovel in the ground. Because when you're talking, you know, 25, 30, 40, $50 million project, that's going to take multiple years to get that funding lined up. That's not going to happen, you know, in a year. And then you have construction, which is going to take another, you know, several years. So that, you know, when Brad says 2030, like, he's not kidding. Like, that's, honestly, that might be optimistic. So if we're going to wait for that project to happen, that's, we're talking six, eight years from now, when we could have our municipal caveman pool, in theory, running in half the time. So I, I don't know what, I guess my question is, is, you know, you've asked for more information about the Y, you know, partnership. And, and I think staff would probably appreciate it if it was more specific as, with regards to exactly what information you're looking to get from that. Thanks.
Joel?
So the time to build a swimming pool, I think we've seen it with Ashland and with Medford and with the Ys across the state. And I don't think that there's a significant difference between the two options with that. And then, and the specific information that I would like to see on the option of partnering with the Y would be locations. What, is it property? Is it money? That, what, what would be the city's part in this? Because if, if the city had, does play a part in it, and it's less than the caveman pool for a facility that offers five times as many days a year, and it costs us less money, that, that would be, that would be a very positive thing. The other thing is, as we move forth, and, and we can do both of them, just because we do the one on the south side first because of money, and then in the future, with economic development and that, if we come back, we can always rebuild the caveman pool or build a new pool on this side if we wanted to. So, so that, that's kind of a moot point. But I, I'm prepared to talk about it all day, but I think we need the, the information from the staff and the Y to make an intelligent decision.
Well, I, I think I've heard from four counselors. I wasn't exactly sure where Rick stood, but Joel, Dwayne, Valerie, and Rick were interested in hearing more about land and partnership opportunities with the Y. Again, that's, so that's for half the council. I guess I'm not exactly sure, you know, what, what that also means in terms of this plan that we've been working on with Caveman Pool, because all of the funding that we have identified so far, at least the large majority of it, the URA, obviously, needs to be, $5 million needs to be spent with, in the urban renewal area. And the ARPA funding needs to be allocated by the end of this year and spent by 2026. So we will lose $6.2 million of resources if we are looking at partnering in a different location or on a different timeline. So I feel like we need to make a decision about Caveman Pool, not necessarily at this moment, but before the costs go up any more than they already have. And, and so I'm not sure what you're asking for, you know, in terms of, are, are we abandoning Caveman Pool and moving on to the Y? Or what, what do you see this, where do you see this going? Joel?
So we don't lose any of that money. We, we, we're going to have that discussion next. And that money will be invested in the community for good returns.
Sure. We lose it for the pool.
It's not, yeah. And we, we may not lose it to the pool, depending on what the answer is from, from the, from the coordination between city staff and, and the Y. To forego that, that option at this stage is wrong. It's not in the long-term interest of the city to, to explore that option. It would be a mistake to do that. And as, as we move forward for, for the city, we need to have as much information as we can to make intelligent information. And to not do that at this point in time would be inappropriate.
Vanessa?
Can you hear me? This is Rob.
Yeah. Go ahead, Rob.
Yeah. I'd like to know, Joel or someone else, what, what potential funding sources are you even considering for the city to be able to provide? Because as Sarah just mentioned, much of what we're talking about really can't be, can't be, can't be directed to the Y. And I'm also wondering, maybe for Brad Converse, it's been two years, and I'm just wondering, what has the, what has the Y done, if anything? Or has the Y just been waiting for the city to, with the city's deep pockets to, to come on board? But I, I, what funding sources are we even thinking about if we're going to partner with the Y, other than possibly providing a piece of land?
So this is Joel, Rob. And good, great question. Great question. The first option I would explore with the Y, given their fundraising capability, is just the land. And that would then free up that other money. We wouldn't lose it to make other investments in our, in our city to make it even better. If, if we have to give them a boost, and they need a boost to work with their other partners, we could obligate some ARPA funds. Though I, I, I would not be in favor of doing that at this point in time because I think there's better use for it. And, and the location with the urban renewal dollars, it's for economic development. It's not for pool development. But if, if we had a location that was in the urban growth boundary or we adjusted the urban growth boundary like we did to include the present caveman pool, because it wasn't in the urban growth boundary either, then those, those dollars could be made available. But I, I think it's premature to, to talk about that before we know the options, Rob. And it's a great question. Here comes Brad.
Yes, this is Brad Converse. Hey, Rob. So, yeah, in the last two years, you know, YMCA, we made that presentation. Didn't get the warmest feedback for that. You know, it wasn't the right time for it. And so we were focusing internally. We lost our previous CEO, Matt. He went back to his hometown in Wisconsin, had a great job opportunity there, so lost him. We brought on our new CEO, Jay, who has experience working with- We brought on our new CEO, Jay, who has experience working with health centers. And, you know, we made a hire with an intention of someone who's used to, who has partnered in that realm before and helped create new facilities. So, we were very intentional with that. And then, on the backend, talking to other partners. Feel like one of the mistakes we made earlier on was coming in a little hot with an idea of, this is exactly what we want to build, and this is how we want the city to do it with us. And this is exactly, you know, it was kind of a, it was Matt's way of working, which worked pretty well for him in the Midwest, and here it wasn't as warmly received. And so, it was a pivot to, let's figure out how we can truly partner, rather than tell people, this is what we're going to do, who wants to join us. And so, that's where we've been for the last two years, is getting a new CEO. And then, exploring partnerships between, you know, between All Care, between what would it look like for some of the local other health systems? What would it look like to build a facility that isn't just a Y, but is more than that? So, and, you know, now we're here, we, we've got on our board a, a member who's a developer from the Bay Area who has a lot of experience in that, who is already on the phone with Eugene. And, yeah, we're definitely not waiting on the city for deep pockets. We're, there's only so much land in Grants Pass that is big enough for a new YMCA. So, we're, we've explored land in other areas that got bought up for different uses. And so, we're, right now, we're looking for the right land to be able to start running very quickly.
Vanessa, you had your hand up a while ago?
Yeah. Thank you for doing this funding strategy work. I do appreciate you going through and looking at all of this. I, I'm fearful of us moving away from the Caveman Pool project because the community gems, community facilities are more and more difficult to come by. But they do have a lot of value in the community. They are low barrier, they don't require a membership. They're typically very inexpensive for people to attend. So, I think, you know, it's very similar to a library, whereas a library is free at the point of service. A community facility like a community pool is very inexpensive. So, I fear us moving away from that, what that might do for the families that do rely heavily on that for entertainment in the summer season. I do think it's important for us to look at the bottom of the funding strategy, at the gap funding strategy. I think that some of the reallocations are wise in terms of dollars used. I think that for the amount of usage that the pool gets, I think that it supersedes the amount of usage currently that Dollar Mountain or Beacon Hill in the future may get. And I don't think it's outside of the realm of possibilities for us to go out for donations or fundraising. I also think that even a bond does have a chance in this community. I know this community really values our youth and values the next generation. So, I don't think that that's as impossible as it's been made out to be. At the same time, I don't really blame anyone for having sticker shock on this project. It's very similar to the water treatment plant. It has the cost of goods and construction have just skyrocketed in recent years. So, I don't blame anyone for feeling hesitant on that sticker price. But I am concerned of us moving away from the project. I think that it has a lot of value in this community. And I think that the current location of the core within the, its location of the core within the city is also really valuable as well. So, I just caution us from moving away from it. I think that, I think that we can move forward on the Caveman Pool project and learn more about how we could possibly partner with the Y and what that would look like for their project in the next decade or so. Brian, then Joel?
Yeah, I just wanted to build on that just for a second. Everyone up here, and probably almost everybody in the audience knows that Caveman Pool is, you know, it's a, it's a landmark in the community. I mean, it's, it's been a part of the community since, I think, the 60s. And, you know, it's one of those things in our town that is unique and has seen many generations of families go through. And I, for one, don't want to be on the council that kills Caveman Pool. And I think that it has tremendous benefit for our community on, you know, for, for anyone that wants to come, but especially in the core of the city, you know, north of the river. Having a place where kids can get to on their own and have good wholesome fun and get home on their own that's relatively affordable. There's, there's very few opportunities for kids to do that in this community. So, to take that away, I'm going to fight tooth and nail for that. And so, I hope you're ready, Joel.
Joel?
So, I'd just like to respond, and again, I'm willing to talk all day about it if you want to. The low barrier, the Y probably does more for people that go swimming in the caveman. I'm sorry?
We can do both, Joel.
And, and we can do both, but let's, let's be a little wise in how we invest our dollars here in the short term with the shortfall that we have. The, thank you for interrupting me, so I could address that. An asset of, of the Caveman Pool, the Y is also an asset. If you look at, at the differences between the two, when we came here from Powers and we were swimming in, in the river over in Powers, the indoor pool was amazing. Our kids, it was, it was an asset. And again, it's, all we're talking about here is exploring options. We're not talking today about making a decision. We still have to make that decision, but we need some additional information so we can make an intelligent decision on how to invest the public money. Do we want to invest it in a, in a facility that's going to be open hopefully more than 70 days a year? Do we want to invest it with less money, hopefully, in a facility that's open 360 days a year? And is an asset to the community, like has been discussed for both places? And is low barrier, probably even more low barrier than, than the Caveman Pool. So, and we can have both in the future. It doesn't foreclose. Depending on which option we choose, we can always do the other one in the future as money and time permit. So, I, I want to move ahead with that request for more information and then bring it back to a workshop, and then we'll make a decision.
Rick?
As we move forward, I would be in favor of looking at, looking at the Shot Creek because it almost saves a million dollars. And I have a hard time imagining that maintenance would be that expensive over time. So, I think that'd be another positive direction. Thank you.
Brian?
I just have a question on the Caveman Pool project. What, what does staff need from council? Or what is the next step for the project? And what is, what would staff need to move forward in whatever that next step is?
So, essentially, the next step in this project is getting council direction on what pool you guys would like to build. We do have two options, as well as how you guys would like to fund it. Phase two cost, even for that contract, we wouldn't enter into that until after we've got that funding and everything like that shored up. Phase two alone is like almost $900,000 for that contract side because so much of that contract cost is actually the permitting side as well. It's more than just the engineering. It's the permitting, construction management. And we're talking about like a two-year commitment from RSA to be a part of this project. So, that's why that cost is so high. So, unless we know what pool option you guys are wanting to choose, what pool options you guys are wanting to lead, and you have a funding source, it wouldn't be in the best interest to even move forward with phase two at this point. And then, just add a few things. Other municipalities, when they are partnering with a place like a Y, a lot of times, if it's a situation like this, they just lock in the rate that the Y or that the pool is currently has for its day use as a resident rate for the Y type of thing. These are all things we could work into a lease or anything like that for property. I think it's 57% of the population lives on the south side of the river. And as far as population expansion, that's where all the expansion is going to happen, which, you know, is another thing to keep in mind. And, yeah, so at this point, it looks like we're kind of split here. We've got some councilors interested in pursuing the YMCA option before making the decision. I wasn't provided with the cost information Brian gave you guys, so I'm not exactly sure what all those projects are.
I can read it back in. It adds in for a gap funding strategy to reallocate some of the LB projects, $300,000 from Dollar Mountain, $200,000 from Beacon Hill, and then possibly reallocating from the urban renewal area, approximately $1.2 million from either the Makerspace or the Riverside Park projects, $1.2 million for donations or fundraising, and about $434,000 from grants.
So, those are all obviously options council could do. A lot of that funding is restricted, even though they're in the LB. It's like they're not tied into TLT dollars to a certain extent. Dollar Mountain, Beacon Hill, those are projects I believe are mainly funded through River Road Reserve sale. The thing you're looking at is then you're decreasing those projects, which is going to largely impact what those projects look like. Dollar Mountain, we currently have a grant to build for, and we're planning on getting that RFP out in the next week or so. And then, as far as impacts, that's really what you're looking at. It'll set Beacon Hill back pretty much indefinitely. And then, it would also hurt Dollar Mountain in the future, which we have a lot of community partnerships involved in Dollar Mountain as well. And then, that's really what it is, is you're taking funding away from other projects that were identified as good projects for the community, for one project in the community. I don't see which grants are a part of this, but grants do have timelines. And so, if you are going out for grants, one option would be the local government grant. That is probably a year and a half out before we'd even be able to, I think they just did their last round. So, it'd come back up to be able to apply in January of 2025. And then, if it gets awarded, it wouldn't be awarded until, it's about September of the following, or same year. So, again, you'd run into your timeline issues with ARPA and things like that.
Thank you. All right. I guess I'm, I'm not exactly sure where we're headed with this because we are a couple of years into the Caveman Pool project. So, are we, and this topic was really about Caveman Pool and not a Y partnership, but are we talking about pausing this and not taking any action? And maybe that requires a question of what the timeline is for Caveman Pool. I mean, were, were we talking about construction next summer? Or when do, when does a decision need to be made before we're delaying being able to take what was the anticipated next step on this?
So, I mean, obviously, we need a decision sooner than later. Construction costs will only increase. Additionally, when it comes to getting the pool up and going, you know, our target was pretty much potentially having construction starting 2024 when we first started this whole design phase. And now, we'd be looking at if we got a quicker decision, 2025, starting construction. Potentially 2026, Pentagon permitting and things like that, any sort of issues that come up with that. But we'd really be shooting to start construction as soon as possible. We, if we had a stout decision today saying, we're going to fund it like this, we want these options, and we want you to move forward with phase two, we would start that process tomorrow. And then, we'd have all those timelines built out then.
So, at this point, 2024 construction is still a possibility?
We'd be looking at, you know, 2024 construction potentially. It's just that it would probably have to halt soon as the winter months hit. So, we may be more advantageous to wait until spring of 2025.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out how much time, you know, if we, if we don't start making these decisions because we want to explore other options, at what point are we like bumping ourselves into a whole extra year of, of waiting and potential cost increases? JC?
So, it's actually my presentation that's coming up. But the ARPA timeline is, the definition is obligate the funds by December of 2024. And so, this is what we're talking about. Obligate, based on the definition of ARPA, means you have a contract in place.
Okay. So, we would need to have the contract in place by the end of '24 in order to use ARPA funding. But as far as right now in terms of construction and kind of where this particular project is at, the next phase could be started this fall, but it sounds like we wouldn't really have enough time to finish the construction this fall, even if we were ready to go today?
No, we wouldn't have time to finish construction in 2024. It is a long construction period for this type of project. As far as other items being spent, you know, permitting, things like that could be billed towards ARPA on this side of the fiscal year potentially. And part of it is, we need to check to see with RSA and all of their subs to make sure that everyone is able to meet those deadlines by that timeline.
Okay. And it sounds like some council members are not ready to move forward on the pool because you want to explore the option with the ARPA. But it, it sounded like that was maybe three to four. I'm not even sure where, where Rick was standing, but go ahead, Joel.
So, I would assume that, that information that we had requested would not take over a month. The other thing I, I would assume is these deadlines, we don't want to force ourselves into making a poor decision based on timelines. Because this, this is the public's money. We got two alternatives that are viable. We need to, over time, do both of them. Which one do we do first? We need another 30 days to get the information and make a good decision. And I don't know how many times I want to say that, but I, I will say it as many as I have to, I guess.
Valerie?
Well, my, some of my concern is also with the gap funding strategy. There's some things here that I know others in the community would not jump on and be real excited about giving up the money that's been allocated for Dollar Mountain, and they're just getting ready to do. Everybody knows how I feel about Beacon Hill, but I also know that some of the Riverside Park and Makerspace, there's people out in the community working on those right now. So, those are things that are not just easy decisions. I think I, I would like to get the feedback. And I think that as soon as it gets in the paper, we'll get lots of feedback. But I really do feel that in the, in the best interest of the city, if we're going to invest this kind of money, we need to really think about the, the, what we're getting for our money. So, I just really think that this is a time, give it the month, take a look, what, what are some of the sites that the Y is looking at? You know, get feedback and then move forward. But I do, I could not make a decision today. And I also know how things go. I will say that I think some of us were ready to go with Caveman Pool funding, but it kept putting, it got put off many times because people wanted more and more things. And that's just it. The reason that it has been going forward is asking for more and more things. And, and, you know, I would have felt a lot more comfortable moving forward in the beginning with just the basic pool for, for the Northeast. And that would have given us the long range, it would have been a lot cheaper. So, I just think that this point in time, it, it does not, not makes any sense to just try to use that ARPA money to go forward and make a quick decision that just could upset too, too many other things. So, I think we're better off to get out, finding information about locations, get an idea of what kind of funding sources they have. As Joel said, if we can get a better product, lesser price. And it's, it truly is an asset that it's worth waiting to get it right.
Brian?
So, I'll keep educating council, I guess, as much as I need to on this. But with regards to a municipal pool, or any, any pool that the public goes to for that matter, the amenities are what make people show up. If you just have a rectangle of water, you're going to have exponentially less people than if you have a rectangle of water with a slide and with a platform and with all the fun things that people actually want to do. Those are the draws. So, the fact that originally, we were presented with a community pool that really had almost none of those things, that's not my fault. I came in, and I'm trying to make this a successful project for the community because that's what the community wants. The community needs the amenities. Like, that's, in this day and age, and the RSA, they even said so last time we talked to them. Like, it's about the amenities. So, I'm sorry that staff didn't put that staff didn't put that in the original plan, but it's in there now. And actually, it doesn't add that much cost. Pool depth increase, $40,000. The platform, it's 170. The drop slides, a fair amount. But these, in the scheme of, or in the grand scheme of the cost of this project, those items are not making this project cost prohibitive. Those items are making this project more cost viable, because more people are going to go to the pool. It's going to see higher utilization. So with regards to that piece of it, you know, I'm sorry it played out the way it did, but that's just what had to happen. I have no issue getting more information about a partnership with the Y. I don't think that needs to delay this project. I don't see that those things are mutually, like, I don't see those in conflict. I think we can move forward on the Caveman Pool project and move forward with the Y. I don't think the Y is expecting us to throw millions of dollars at them. Brad Converse sent us some links to other communities that had, where municipalities had partnered with YMCA's to do projects. And I think just about every one of those projects, it was some sort of like land donation or something. The municipality was not, you know, donating big sums of money to get that project done. So I don't know why we can't move forward on, you know, getting some of these questions answered that staff has for Caveman Pool, get some information about what a partnership with the Y looks like, and keep both projects going.
Dwayne's on the phone. I don't know if you're muted, but we can't hear you, Dwayne. Okay, what is it again? Star? Star six to unmute. Dwayne.
Yeah? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. I'm going to make a motion. I move to pause the Caveman Pool for 30 days and allow the YMCA to get their information together and come back to us 30 days and show us what their plans are.
All right. Is there a second? Second by Valerie. Discussion on the motion? Joel?
Well, I support it. I think the better, more information we have, the better decision we make.
Okay. Any further discussion? Rick?
Could two weeks be sufficient, or you'd need 30 days?
We'd probably want 30 days or so. I'm not sure how frequently the YMCA board meets to have these types of discussions. But, you know, if this is the direction council would like us to go, or at least look at before bringing you back more of the options, the 30-day timeline would be more beneficial.
Thank you.
Brian.
I'm in favor of getting more information from the Y. I think the wording of the motion to pause the Caveman Pool project, I'm not in favor of. That doesn't even need to be in there. The motion could just be, you know, wait 30 days to get more information from the Y. I think the wording of that motion potentially could be used later, or be seen later as a more formal pause on the Caveman Pool project. So I'm not in favor of this motion.
Vanessa. I also think right now, there's this battle between the existing Caveman Pool and the new YMCA project that I don't think needs to even exist. I don't think that there needs to be a battle between the two. I think that the city could certainly move forward in talking about and planning for the Caveman Pool, as well as talking about and moving forward and planning with the YMCA and what a partnership might look like there. I think that there is a conflict in terms of our ARPA timeline. I understand some counselors don't want to feel rushed, but the timeline is real, and we have to abide by it, or that money will go back to the federal government. And unfortunately, the URA district is not as flexible as maybe the YMCA project may need it to be. I'm assuming that that will require a pretty large tract of land, which we know are very hard to come by in this community. So I don't think that the conflict needs to exist. Therefore, I will vote no.
Any further discussion? Brian?
I was just going to ask Dwayne if he would be willing to amend his motion to just pause this discussion for 30 days until we get more information from the Y.
No, I don't want to change my motion.
Okay. All right. So I think the motion, did you, the motion Karen was to pause the Caveman Pool project for 30 days and to get more information from the YMCA. Okay. And Dwayne, you made the motion. So how do you vote? Did we lose Dwayne?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Vanessa?
No.
Rick?
No.
Valerie?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Brian?
No.
Rob?
Yes.
Eric. Motion passed four to three. So I have a note on the agenda to have this come back in a month, and we'll get some more information on the YMCA plans. And talk about this again. Any further discussion? Brian?
I was just going to ask for our next topic, if we could switch them. I think that there's a fair number of people in the audience that are here for the urban renewal piece. So that's up to you, though.
Are there any objections to doing that? We'd go Urban Renewal Agency and then ARPA? Okay. Let's go ahead and do that then. So next up is Urban Renewal with Dana Pierce.
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor, members of the public. I'm Dana Pierce, Economic Development Division. Today, I'm going to present on the Urban Renewal Agency Task Force discussion. Background on this, on February 12th, the URA Board gave direction to create a urban renewal task force. This was to review the status of the current and proposed projects and to develop a five-year implementation strategy that aligns with the adopted URA plan, also to consider priority projects, available funding, et cetera. And then on March 6th, staff presented an initial design for the proposed task force. The council requested for the discussion, and that's what we're looking at today. Just some more quick background. These were potential content ideas for the five-year strategy. I don't necessarily have to go through all of them, because they were on the last presentation. But some of them are to look at feasibility, recommend distribution of URA funds in a five-year timeframe, engage the public, various things. On March 6th, the council meeting, within this discussion, some of these things were established. We established that the URA grants and housing program development can proceed simultaneously with the creation of a task force. Priority projects will be aligned with the scope of the urban renewal plan and previous direction provided by the URA Board. Affected taxing districts, economic areas, industry, URA property, and business owners, and private sector input are valuable to provide local relevance and expertise. We also established that task force and advisory committees vary in purpose size and makeup, and safeguards may be needed to ensure a healthy representation. So to start off, we're really going to look at this question of what is URA Board's overall purpose and intent of this task force? If the Board desires a comprehensive foundational examination of URA plant projects and prioritizations of allocations, that discussion may be most appropriate at the Board level. If the Board plans to retain most or all of the adopted URA projects and only seeks policy and implementation recommendations from community members, that discussion may be most appropriate for a task force. So things to consider. Part of that March 6th discussion, there were public comments and also URA Board discussion topics. The questions that came from that around membership makeup were geography versus economic area. We could look at the different economic areas, for example, like the industrial area, downtown, River District, and the Redwood Highway area as separate economic-type areas versus the geography of north of A Street, south of the river. Prioritizing economic development and industry representation seemed to be a priority for several members of the Board. And we also had a request from the public to include a member from the affected taxing districts. Other topics for URA Board's consideration are the task force size, you know, should it be seven, as we originally recommended, or be more updated? Updates to the recommended membership makeup, that's part of this discussion today. Who do we want to be on that Board? Also, selecting the URA Board representatives that want to participate on that task force. What's the tenure of the task force? Are we looking at six months, a year? Type and frequency of interim updates to council also. When should we be reporting back? Verbal updates from the council representatives should be written quarterly? So these are all things, again, we're going to consider in the formation of this task force. These are just reference slides. This is the original recommendation that was made for this task force was to have one commercial lender, one commercial or industrial developer, three property or business owners representing the different geographic areas listed here, and then two URA Board members. Also a reference slide, these are the affected taxing districts, just as a reminder. You can come back to these if anybody wants to look at them through the discussion. So part of the public engagement and feedback that we received, taxing districts were interested in getting more communications regarding URA activity and decisions. So staff has created a contact list for the affected taxing districts. That list includes Board chairs, executive directors, superintendents, financial, chief financial officers, for example. And then some of the safeguards that are in place already, public meetings provide opportunity for public comment and for additional representation. And then the plan itself establishes URA contribution percentages that require a match on private projects. These next two slides are just an outline, a sample outline of what the task force work will look like. We'd start with a background, consolidate relative background data, and provide a presentation to that task force to bring them up to speed, help them understand where things are at. A financial review would be important. Utilize the financial tools to show how funds have been spent, review the current allocations and recommendations. Also, review available funds, explore leveraging those with other potential funding sources. And then from there, prioritize the projects. We would assess current needs, feasibility, financial projects, and then also assess those projects and activities to be completed in a five-year timeframe. The URA would also look at leveraging opportunities in prioritizing projects. So, for example, identifying ripe sites and partnerships over the next five years where the URA funds can be the highest degree of impact on job creation, removing blight and land values. From there, a five-year implementation strategy document would be completed, showing the expenditure priorities and recommended programming. Urban Renewal Agency would then review that document, provide requests for modifications. The task force would review that revised draft, make modifications, finalize it, and present that to the Board for a final review. Some of the cost implications, of course, urban renewal is the funding source. It would require some urban renewal staff time. And we also did get a cost estimate from Elaine Howard Consulting. And on here, they'll want to do in-person meetings and work sessions, two to four virtual meetings, work sessions. That was a guess that we made. But in her estimate, she did provide us, it would be roughly around $11,000. Every time she travels here, it costs another $2,000. So if they're not in-person meetings, it can be a little less. And in her estimate, it was estimated to be about a four-month process. There would be four task force meetings, two agency meetings, and then four staff meetings included in that base estimate. And she would prepare the documentation. So that is on here, too. So what we're looking at here today is to answer some of these questions related to the task force. What is the URA Board's overall purpose and intent for this task force? So I can take you back to Slide 5 on that. And then how many members should be on the task force and who should be represented? Does the agency support contracting with Elaine Howard Consulting in conducting the activities of the task force and preparing the documents? And then what are some of the other considerations that need to be included in the task force development? I think that's it. So...
Questions? Vanessa?
Would you mind restating the number of meetings? Go over that just one more time, please.
Sure. Based on the, this is an estimate, a really rough estimate. You know, we had to give her a general scope of work. And so it was a four-month process. There would be four meetings with the task force, two meetings with the agency board, and then four, or I'm sorry, seven staff meetings.
Are there other questions? I guess I am not sure, like, to me, I guess, it feels, and I've said this, I feel like I've said this a number of times, but it hasn't made it to the whole council, probably. But I'm not sure why we're jumping down the task force path on this. It seems like it came up fairly quickly. I think we have a bunch of issues with the URA that we need to sort out in terms of allocating or reallocating certain ways that that pie is sliced. And we have, obviously, kind of this outline of a plan that was developed several years ago. And some of those projects, we know, are out of date. And I think the whole reason why the grants passed URA was, or that was created, was not with urban renewal in mind, exactly, but was to come up with some funding for the water treatment plant. But I think we have a really golden opportunity here to work on urban renewal and to reprioritize what we want to do with those funds. And I'm not sure why we would want to, at this time, hand that off to a task force. I think our Caveman Pool discussion we just had is a perfect example of what happened when we did a task force on the Caveman Pool about two years ago. And we had a small group of people meet, although they were important stakeholders to the pool. We didn't get big community involvement, and we are now, two years later, have yet to take action in a meaningful way on their recommendations. And we're talking about diverting the funding or unraveling that project and doing something completely different. So it's like we've got a lot of details here about task force, but I would just like to take a step back and look at the urban renewal project and prioritize how we want to use these funds, and come up with a big-picture plan that involves more of the community than a small task force. And I've asked for that a couple of different times, and it's not, like, making it through to the presentation. So I haven't asked you, Dana, so I'm not frustrated with you, but like, I think I spelled this out, like, loud and clear a week ago. I did it previously. Like, it's not getting anywhere. So if you all want to go down, you know, the task force, and you So, if you all want to go down, you know, the task force and you feel like, you know, handing this off to somebody, some other group, I guess, so be it. But I just think we need the breaks on this for a minute. Valerie?
Yeah, I think I agree with you on Sarah, and I think we had this discussion at an agenda meeting. I don't know that we've had it on council level yet. I think that we need more community before we go down the task force, because we also had a task force on when we were looking at the downtown and doing Caveman Plaza. So, you know, I think sometimes we jump into task force and then that becomes a very limited amount of input. So, I would rather do like a forum or some sort of, you know, hype-up of the fact that we are a big turning point in our, you know, to where now there's money and we can start to do some leveraging and getting more community feedback as to what they're interested. Because I've heard outside of here and community, people interested in the, you know, the River District part of it, but I don't know if that's really on our, on the, what we currently have listed out. So, I think the whole idea of me having and talking about a task force was just trying to broaden and get the idea of what are the priorities. And I think you're kind of, it's, you're not really sure in developing your task force if you're going to get that, as opposed to first of all, going out and getting community feedback and then building a task force after we've kind of gotten the feedback from the overall community. And it seems to me, we did have a, we did have a meeting years ago, I want to say it was two years ago, when we first initiated the urban renewal. And there was actually quite a few people there at the time, so, you know. But I think this is another time to just go back and do that before we do the task force. Those are my thoughts.
Brian?
Thank you. So, if you look at other urban renewal districts throughout the state, they're, they're very small, they're very targeted, they serve a very specific purpose. And we have one of, if not the largest, urban renewal districts in the state because of the reason it was created, to help fund the water treatment plant project. So, now we have a unwieldy district with a whole list of items that, you know, when it was created, council, they had, they had to allocate those funds. And so, so they came up with this list of items and they did the best they could at the time. And now, we've got this juggernaut that is just too big and too complicated, and it's, and clearly, we haven't gotten very far, because, you know, in this entire term on council, this is how far we've gotten. So, I think trying to hand this thing off to a task force, first of all, it's not fair to the task force, because if we haven't been able to do anything with it in three-plus years, I don't know what, what kind of magic thing they're going to be able to do in six months. But I would probably be in favor of taking a step back, having the board do a more intensive look at the district, maybe whittle down the priorities, maybe figure out how to make it a little bit more straightforward, so it's easier to work with going forward. If that means that we, you know, have a, have a full day session devoted to that, you know, kind of like a mini strategic planning for the URA, I would be okay with that. And I think that that would probably be worthwhile. So, yeah, I'm not, I'm not in favor of moving forward on the task force right now. I think that there may be a point in the future where there will be a time for that, but I don't think that time is right now.
Joel?
Well, I guess it's my day to disagree. I look at on slide two and, and three, deep dive into feasibility and cost benefit of large projects, recommended distribution of URA resources for fiscal year '25 through '38, ways to leverage city-owned properties, waiting tools to prioritize, public engagement planning, council and private sector alignment, combination of financial resources, annual financial updates, rolling project implementation. The task force would review the status of current proposed projects, develop a five-year implementation strategy for the board's approval that are within the adopted URA plan, consider priorities, available funds, opportunities for leveraging funds, community assets, and catalytic investment opportunities. I don't think this council's going to do that. And I think it would be very appropriate for a task force to examine those things, especially under the guidance of somebody that's done it before, as, I can't remember our consultant's name, but, and then unlike our public levy on public safety funding, we front-load it with public involvement, including this task force. And we get buy-in from the beginning, rather than having people react to this proposal or that proposal or whatever. And so, I just think we need to go ahead and do it. It will leverage our time and effort and energy, and I think we'll get a better product.
Aaron?
Sounds like there's diverse opinions potential on where to move forward, but some of the things on the, on the list that Dana provided are true items that ultimately need to have answers to. And it could be that you could combine the two, it doesn't have to be an either-or thing, like we've talked about at other sessions. But you could have Elaine come in and work with the board, which is you as a city council, to answer those questions that are up there, but also include public outreach as part of that process, working through that system. And to have her coordinate that through one or two or three different work sessions and or workshop opportunities where you're focusing on urban renewal and focusing on getting the, diving down into these, which may include some roundtables, which may include some public outreach. But as Council Lovely said, it's, we are at a turning point, a big turning point here, and you can, you have the ability to refocus, reinvigorate urban renewal wherever we go in the future. So, that could be an option also, is to, if you want the board to make those decisions and not a task force, okay. If you want the public outreach, but you still want to work it together, then maybe we bring Elaine on. She helps facilitate both with the public outreach as part of your decision-making process.
Joel, then Vanessa?
Well, regardless of whether we have a task force or not, the, the board makes the decisions, correct? Task force doesn't make any decisions. Okay.
Vanessa, then Rick.
I do agree with stepping backward from the task force. I, in reading about what other URA boards, and we have a lot of information out there in the state of Oregon, there's some URA boards that have existed since the 80s. So, there is a plethora of information of what other communities have done. They typically have a more narrow approach when they go out to the public for participation. It's not a really wide visionary, what would you like to do? It's how could transportation be improved in this corner of town? Or what type of housing would you like to see in this specific district? So, I think that we may receive better results from public participation if we don't cast such a wide net, such as a visionary request. I think that that really should be coming from the board. I do see benefit to us having some type of strategic planning session or a prioritization session for the URA, and maybe even reassessing what projects are important to us. I personally am ready to move forward on all things housing. I think if we go out to the public, that's more than likely what we're going to continue to hear, is that housing is a crisis in our community. And I'm almost certain every dollar we invest in housing, we will get more economic dollars back, especially market rate housing. And so, I would, I would support us moving forward with some type of prioritization or strategic planning, and then, of course, working with Elaine. I think that she does bring a lot of benefit in organizing this information. I think what council really is looking for, all of the things listed that the task force would bring us are certainly beneficial, but I think what we're really looking for is an implementation or an action plan. I think that that maybe is where the council is really struggling with this, like, analysis paralysis. So, I think Elaine could help us with that. And then, once we narrow more what our priorities are, I think having a charrette, a roundtable, a forum, whatever that looks like, I think that that would help us move forward from there.
Rick, and then Rob.
I also like what Vanessa's saying. I think we need to move forward, proceed without delay. But one thing I'm concerned about is isolating ourselves in our decision-making. I would like to see the public involved as we make our direction go forward. And if forum is one way, I was thinking of the task force, but that may be slow things down. So, if a forum would help things move forward for the, help the council to make their decisions and make it more concise and have a better direction, I'd be in favor of that. Thank you.
Rob?
Yeah, I, I too would be in favor of broadening it out with a forum first and then a task force. I mean, it's been eight years, basically, and virtually nothing has, has been, there's been no focus really as far as getting anything done, and, or not sufficient focus, I should say. So, to broaden it out first, and then I would say to immediately follow that with a task force, I think would probably be the way to go.
Okay. Well, it sounds like we have, I don't know if that was Dwayne, are you wanting to jump in?
No, he's off.
He's off now? Okay. Sounds like we have general consensus of doing some sort of wider public forum, charrette, roundtable, getting some public input on that, and then moving forward with a task force. Does anybody have more? Brian?
I've heard at least a couple people talk about doing some longer sessions with the board and probably with Elaine to work through some of this. So, I think that there's benefit to that, since we're the board and we are the elected board, and to be more involved in that, I think would be beneficial. So, I don't know if there's appetite on the board for, for putting in that kind of time on this. I certainly am willing to do that. So, and I think that it would be worthwhile. So, I'd like to hear from the other board members.
Yeah, it'd be interesting knowing, I guess, if we do, if we do that, would we do the, that first, a longer session first, and then come back to a wider public, or how to organize that? Aaron?
I think what might be best is, is there's a number of different options and approaches, and we have multiple opinions on maybe the best way to do that. And listening to this, even staff is questioning what, what might be the best way, but I think truly the best way is to, for us to acquire the services of Elaine. She knows where we are with the urban renewal agency. She knows some of the hurdles and obstacles which have been discussed today with the uniqueness of our urban renewal agency compared to others, and how do we get that special focus in maybe specific areas or in specific topics. I think bringing her on, she can come up with a game plan, present a game plan to council for your consensus and consideration, and then we move forward with whatever it is. But I think bringing her on to come up with next steps on how we can be most efficient and effective with your time and get a great finished product would be the first best step.
All right. Counsel, are you interested in hiring Elaine as a consultant on this? Everybody in the room says yes. Okay. That's five of you, anyway. Any further discussion on URA at the moment? Nope? Okay. Let's go to ARPA. Whenever you're ready, yeah.
Good afternoon, council. J.C. Rowley Finance Director, here to talk about the American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA, our evaluation and reallocation potentially. So, I'm going to go back to the beginning of ARPA and review that, go over our current allocation, and then go through some revisions to the allocation potentially, and the relationship to council goals is all five. So, going back to the beginning of ARPA, there were four main pillars that ARPA tried to stay underneath, which was public sector revenues, public health and economic response, premium pay for essential workers, and water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. The final rule was published in 2022, and then they came out with a revision, which was called the interim final rule in 2023. This added streets as an allowed infrastructure, and it also included a $10 million standard allowance for revenue loss. So, ease of reporting, less reporting requirements, and organizations can still report as revenue loss while maintaining the original adherence to the previous pillars. So, as a reminder, the City of Grants Pass got $9.3 million, and so, we do qualify to take all of our ARPA dollars as a standard allowance. Your projects need to be obligated by December 2024 and spent by 2026, and any unspent ARPA money is to be returned to the U.S. Treasury. So, now I'm going to go over our current allocation, and I'm going to do this relatively briefly. So, there was an ARPA survey. We allocated $28,000, which we spent just underneath that, and that was to engage the community of how to spend $6.3 million of that, because $3 million was set aside for the water treatment plant. There's $3 million allocated to eligible water capital projects, again, more specifically the water treatment plant, and we've already started using some of these funds regarding site cleanup, soil samples, membrane procurement, and technology selection that are ARPA-eligible. Affordable housing, a little bit over $3 million. There's a joint venture between the City of Grants Pass Josephine Housing and Community Development Council and Housing Authority of Jackson County to acquire land and construct a multifamily housing development that is affordable to low-income residents. There's another allocation for public infrastructure for affordable housing, which is about $1.5 million. The desire of this allocation is to jumpstart development, which is understood that it should be treated as a potential reimbursement district with funds returning to affordable This is relatively new. $67,500 was set aside for affordable housing and unhoused programs. More specifically, this is the pot of money that we set aside for the warming shelter in this winter. The portable toilets, we allocated $8,000. I think that pretty much speaks for itself of what it's being used for. Portable parklets is allocated $38,000. The intent of this allocation is to provide grant opportunities to potential city businesses that would like to add additional outside seating with adjacent on-street public parking And then the swimming pool, which was a discussion of the previous two conversations, of $1.2 million, to potentially go towards the rebuild and new design of the Grants Pass caveman Public safety communications repeater, about $200,000, was thought to place a secondary radio shelter at the U.S. Cellular Tower Site on Dollar Mountain. And as of March 31st, this is what we've reported back to the U.S. Treasury, and you can see our $9.3 million as far as allocated between the various projects and what we've actually spent, and there's about a $5.8 million difference. So, just because we spent it doesn't necessarily mean we haven't really assigned those funds. And two really good examples are the public infrastructure for affordable housing. On June 5th, staff will be bringing a potential award of $747,000 plus balance to a proposer. And then, the second one is the public safety communications repeater, and I'll go over that here in a little bit, too. We don't think that $200,000 is going to be enough for the project, however, that could easily be reused for mobile radios for public safety. Some other allocations in there, the $11,000 on the affordable housing and unhoused programs, that is the back half of the warming shelter. We front-loaded $11,000 to the warming shelter for operations, and the remaining $11,000 is on the back half of the contract, which we don't have the final report until May 31st of this year. And then the portable parklets, they think in this next round, they're going to award a handful, which will be about $24,000, so there should be about $10,000 left over. And you can see on the very right, there's about $1.2 million if we don't. And you can see on the very right, there's about $1.2 million if we don't have a contract for the pool remaining to potentially be reallocated. So revisions to the allocation. So funds are required to be obligated by December 31st, 2024. The definition obligated means an, an order placed for property and services and entering into contract subawards and similar transactions that require a payment. And those funds need to be spent by December 31st, 2026. So revise allocation to existing projects is an option. So water capital or the replacement water treatment plant is a pretty easy one. The repurposing allocations to a similar project, so the public safety communications, so for radio replacement, staff recommended due to timing and appropriations grant application, and I'll get into that in a little bit. Potentially creating a new allocation under one of the four pillars, and there's the reminder of the four pillars there as well. So here's just some suggestions, and they don't have to necessarily be considered, but there's just some things that staff brought forward. So this would repurpose the previous $200,000 allocation to purchase communications equipment for police and fire mobile radios. City staff is hopeful that a community-initiated project appropriations allocation from the state could fund the $1.2 million repeater project in the near future. This one's going to be wordy, and I'm not the expert on this, but I'm going to read it. So the annexation/rezone aid program, a temporary targeted program that aids property owners through the annexation and/or rezoning process with an emphasis on properties under service and annexation agreements. The city would execute public education about what annexation means, do targeted outreach to owners under existing service and annexation agreements, as well as owners located on the edge of the existing city limits. So larger lot properties, two and a half acres plus, that would potential for multifamily housing development if annexed or upzone. The city would do targeted outreach to property owners for larger lots or contiguous lots that may be combined to larger lots that if upzone multifamily housing type would be an allowable use. And staff estimates between 204, 200 and 400,000. Another one is public improvements that benefit moderate and high-density zone lots with high probability of future multifamily housing development. Identify public improvements that would benefit moderate and high-density zone lots with high probability of multifamily housing development. Examples include, but are not limited to, sound barrier walls for bordering highways, right-of-way improvements, infrastructure expansion, et cetera. And then the estimate between a half a million and a million dollars. The Redwood Highway Looping Water Project, WA 6362, which is a current project to build a 16-inch water main loop that approximately 4,500 linear feet of 16-inch water main will complete the initial looping required for secondary feeds that dowel and will erode. So this project will open up buildable lands in the Redwood area. The estimated need is a little bit over $2 million to make this worthwhile to coincide with some of the federal guidelines that we would have with construction. Another idea, potentially is affordable housing and unhoused infrastructure, such as a property acquisition for a low-barrier shelter navigation center. The estimated need is unknown at this time. Are we looking at previous properties? Do we need to look at new properties? And potentially, are there any other ideas? Question mark. And so the call to action is at your council's discretion. We could keep the current allocation, or we can make revisions to the allocation. I do want to keep in mind that December 31st, 2024 is our last chance to obligate funds, which really means we need to have things in, in movement before then. And I'll take any questions.
Thanks, J.C. I just wanted to add on to the end of the presentation, real quick here regarding the affordable housing and unhoused issue. So I met, and Valerie and Aaron and I think Brad, we're all there last Monday with a number of service providers in the area, including Ucan, Alcare, Mint, PATH, Options. Anyway, there were, there were a number of people there, and Housing Advisory Committee was represented in discussing what our next steps might be to open a shelter that would help us move people out of our parks. Because as we face the Supreme Court decision coming up later this summer, I think we all understand that one way or another, we have a large homeless population right now that is living in our parks, and the community would like them to not be in the parks. So we discussed how to go about establishing a shelter, and it sounds like the partners feel like they can definitely help with funding after we have a site. So the first step needs to be to, to identify a location and a building or pallet shelters or something of that nature, and then to build the plan out around that so that they would know what services, you know, they could provide or billable services they could get funding for and contribute to the operation of such a facility. So I guess as you're thinking about the allocation here, the ask is really for the city to take the lead on a property, and then service providers could step in to provide the operation. So with that, any questions? Go ahead, Joel.
Well, I would support what you're saying, Sarah, and I would add some additional requirements. One is, it has to be synergistic with economic development for the community. And so if, if we are successful in a, a new pool at minimal expense to the city, we can reallocate a lot of these dollars that was going to go to the pool for other things, including what you talked about. If we can locate that shelter, I was talking to some people on the edge of town, like Spalding. The bus routes can be changed. People that run them would already agree that they could do that very easily. And then it would give us a chance to leverage dollars for infrastructure for future economic development of the Spalding area. And so you're doing three things at once. You got your pool, you got your economic development, and you have, I don't call it low-barrier shelter, I call it transition shelter, given the change in our state laws and where we're at. And so I'm going to be going down and, and talking to some folks in Medford about that idea, and, and I, I support that reallocation. And as we do that, we need to make sure we accomplish more than one goal at the same time with the money.
Thank you. Let's do questions real quick, and then we'll jump into discussion. Val, you have a question?
Yeah, I did. I just, looking at the slide for current allocation spent and assigned, I want clarity, I guess, on the assigned. So the assigned is money that we will be spending because we have committed it, correct? And so we expect to have it spent by, I mean, not spent, but it, it, it's already in a contract. So we don't have to worry about the December 24.
Yeah, I would say the only one that is an estimate up there probably is going to be the $24,000 for the parklets.
Okay.
Potentially the $11,000 for the unhoused for the warming shelter could come underneath if their expenses came underneath.
Okay.
Looking around really quick, and potentially the $200,000 for the equipment. But as I'm told, that can easily be spent.
Okay. Okay. So that's what I was just getting clarity in exactly what we were talking about. Okay. So that was my question for that. So then I'll come back to discussion.
Brian, then Vanessa?
I have a very similar question. I'm not totally clear on what resources we are considering reassigning. Because before Valerie asked that question, I thought we were looking at the assigned column because there's the allocated and the expended. So I'm just, like, what, what are we looking at for reassignment, potentially?
I think the easiest low-hanging fruit is the difference off to the far right. So the assigned is kind of, it already has a place marker of potential spend, where accounting-wise, we've already spent the second column.
So for the assigned column, does staff foresee any difficulty in those assigned resources getting allocated and expended within the, the bounds of the timelines or the deadlines?
Basically, yeah. So this is what we think is a real high potential.
With the addition that J.C. already mentioned, the, the portable parklets, we don't know if, there may be plus or minus. There may be a little less than that. And also, the affordable housing unhoused program, $11,000, there might be a little pro or con on that. The others are pretty much easily spent all the way through. So there could be a couple of extra dollars that would be going over to the difference in those two categories.
Okay. So we're not talking about a lot here. There's just kind of a handful of items in the difference column. I have a question about the repeater project. We allocated $200,000 for that. The slide deck says that project is 1.2 million. Is that what the cost has gone to since we originally allocated? Did we think that 200 was going to cover the whole project originally?
I'll let the chief answer those questions.
Yeah, counsel, that's a great question. We, I initially, and through some early review, thought that that would cover it, but we were incorrect. So we did reach out, and we found the appropriations grant, and we feel we're a good contender for that. We did add inflation to that 1.2 number, since that will not be decided upon till next year. So we do feel confident there. And I can easily spend that $200,000 on the in-car or in-vehicle mobile radios. They're pretty expensive. They cost between $7,000 and $8,000. So considering that just police alone has about 58 vehicles with a complement of old and new radios, I can easily spend that money to upgrade the fleet. And I spoke with Acting Chief Randy DeLong the other day, and he will also probably have some vehicles that could use some upgraded mobile radios, too. So all to say, that money is easily spent if that is the wishes of the council.
Okay. Thanks, chief. Some of the, there was another potential recommendation from staff regarding annexation/rezone aid program with the estimated need at the bottom. And I'm just curious, I'm trying to understand, like, the benefit that the city receives from, if, if we were to, to do something like that.
I think she's in the audience, and if Amber would like to come up and explain this further.
So it's kind of twofold. So with annexation, it's getting more buildable lands available. It's something we've been working on at HAC, how to get those moved open, as well as the service and annexation agreements. We've decided that we're not really moving forward with those anymore, but we do still have property owners that are under them that might be sitting at the front line of that city limits, meaning the next person down can't annex until they do. So getting them encouraged to move along can help move the rest of them. In terms of the larger lot properties, this is really just to identify and get more properties that are actually feasible for multifamily development. We have a good amount of R4 land, but when you actually look at the properties, not a lot of them are actually very feasible for multifamily due to topography, size, or even just the ownership, not really intending to sell, it being in a long-term plan for them. So just making it more feasible for developers to come here.
Okay. Thank you.
Vanessa, then Joel. Would you mind going back to the slide that we were at previously with the numbers? I was hoping you could explain number one on June 5th. I missed that part, the 747 balance.
Yeah, so they awarded an $800,000 RFP last year, I think sometime. And then they were, they put out another RFP for the 747,500 that is going to come to council on June 5th of this year as a potential award. So in essence, expending the, we're assigning the, the entire amount.
Joel?
So ARPA dollars expire. Urban renewal dollars don't. The $1.2 million in the swimming pool may be not needed. And what I would like to do is tentatively allocate that to the other areas where the community has some definite needs. The first thing I would do is I would put it into the affordable housing and unhoused programs. I would put $400,000 into that to make, make that transition shelter a reality. I would put some additional dollars into the public infrastructure for affordable housing. I would put it up to the full $2 million out at Redwood. I would take what I feel is left over from the Portland Lou Baker Park and portable parklets. That seems like we're not going to expend those. And I would put that into the, let me see here, do, 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 make sure I go slow down. The affordable housing and unhoused programs. And then the other thing I would do is the public infrastructure, that, that, and that. Then I would make sure that the warming shelter, if we could allocate the dollars for next year, would be allocated out of this. And, and have it be a tentative allocation, depending on our pool decision in 30, 45 days. I think it would be a, an investment for the community that would be efficient. And one of the things that my whole career, I don't feel like the court system, as they've agreed, allocate dollars. That's our job. And so we need to do what we think is right regardless of what the Supreme Court says. And so I would, I would, that's, that would be my proposal.
Is there a question in there, Joel?
Sure.
Yeah? You got a question?
Do you have a question for J.C.?
No, I don't. I'm sorry.
Okay. That's all right. Are there questions still? I have a couple of questions. I'm not sure I'm completely following. Yeah, so we're on the right page. So on the affordable housing project line, where it says assigned 1.9 million, what is that going to?
That's the Jackson County, Josephine County Housing Authority Low Income Housing Project.
Okay. Something, so it has been officially allocated to them. It's just not spent out yet? Okay. This is the, different than Cathedral Square, second project?
They utilize this, these resources to help purchase the property that's on the corner of Allen Creek and, is it Harbeck?
Allen Creek.
Allen Creek Crossings. Isn't that what it's called? Allen Creek Crossings?
Yeah.
Okay. So all of that has been completely allocated. And then on the public housing, the public infrastructure for affordable housing, the next line down, I see the 747 coming forward at the bottom, but the, the remainder of that, which is approximately an equal amount there, has also been allocated?
So there's been three rounds of RFPs, if I'm correct. They awarded the first one, and I think the second one potentially fell through, and then the third one is coming forward here in June for the full amount.
So it's really, I mean, at this point, I guess, what, has like 800,000 been actually allocated to somebody? I'm trying to figure out what the difference is between assigned and difference, because like in some cases, the swimming pool, I would say it has been assigned. It's just not spent yet, but it's in the difference column. And then in this other one, the 747 hasn't been given to anybody in particular, but it is on the schedule for next month. So.
So assigned, I viewed as we have a contract agreement in place with a dollar figure. And so the only potential ones that are estimates are the 24,000 and the 200,000. Like the chief said, it can easily be spent. But the potential $1.5 million for the public infrastructure has potentially been 100% awarded. And Mark can explain further.
Yeah. The, so there were three rounds of the public infrastructure for affordable housing. The first round was, was allocated. However, the applicant wasn't able to move forward, so those monies came back, and that was the 747-plus amount. There was a second RFP, which the council had approved back in March for home bridging for the Scoville project. For that was the senior housing development.
Right.
And so we had the balance of that 747 for the final, the third round, which we'll bring to you as staff for an approval come June 5th. And that would allocate the two projects and fulfill the.
So 800-something has been allocated to the Scoville project, and then 747 of it is not really allocated yet, but will. seven forty-seven of it is not really allocated yet, but will be coming before the council in a month.
Exactly.
Okay. And then, okay, and then the communications repeater, two hundred thousand's just not going to get, get spent on the repeater because it's a much more expensive project. Okay. That's all my questions. Anybody else have questions? Brian?
Yeah, I was just curious if someone can just say the name of that project that you were just talking about for the, that seven hundred forty-seven thousand? I'm just curious what project that will be coming forward to us?
The project is Fruitdale Townhomes.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? All right, discussion? We heard from you, Joel, do you have more?
No, I'm just going to say ditto.
Okay.
I respect your time.
Valerie?
Yeah, I didn't catch all those, Joel, because you were rattling those off pretty darn fast. So, I, I'm assuming that you didn't, didn't touch any of the assigned and only went for the, the difference?
Which one?
That, that you were only using the differences, not the assigned?
So, what I looked at was the allocated funds.
Microphone, microphone, Joel, oh yeah, sorry.
So, what I did was, I looked at the two areas where you have allocated funds, but they haven't been expended or assigned.
Which is a difference.
And then, and then I looked at the places where it could be reassigned. And, and so, that was the one point two million dollars from the swimming pool, this would be tentative based on what we come back with the collaboration with the Y. And that we could increase then the housing projects, we could have the public infrastructure out at Redwood, fully fund that for affordable housing. We could have adequate money to put in a transition campground in an appropriate place that would also serve as economic development for the community. And hopefully, then also allocate dollars ahead of time to fund the warming shelter for next year.
Okay, all right, I think I followed along with that. I also, in the back of my mind, as much, you know, I'm looking at the one point two swimming pool money and realizing that if, it's going to be difficult, which it might be, to be able to get it allocated in that, looking at reallocating that in some form of housing, whether it's affordable housing. I agree with Sarah, the reality of it is, we are going to, no matter which way this precourt goes, we will have homeless people that are going to need something. So, I think that, and after sitting in the meeting with the nonprofits and the people who are out doing the work, and, and being proactive, I think we really do need to look for a place. And we talked about the fact that there has been somewhat of a change, I think a lot of people have a bitter, better attitude now of understanding that, you know, they're not going to just go away if we, you know, we're going to need to do something. So, even if looking at some of the previous sites that we've looked at, or looking at new sites, that that is something that would be well spent in our community to help get people out of our parks, which is what I know we all need. So, I am open to that discussion.
Erin, you have something?
Yes, just as some potential guidance during this discussion is, Councilor King did bring up a lot of great projects for your consideration. Some of those projects I would have some concern with, without further clarities. Say, for instance, I'm going to utilize two. The transitional housing, I think he mentioned a dollar amount of four hundred thousand dollars. And then, also warming shelter dollars for next year. So, the concern is, those all have a potential, will they be spent or will they not fully be spent? Say, for instance, the four hundred thousand dollars for transitional housing, is that enough to truly buy a piece of property, or you anticipate? And if it is, and we don't get a partner, and then we lose the money, it's gone. Same thing with, say, for instance, a warming shelter, we're going to give twenty-four thousand for a warm shelter, they only use ten of it, fourteen thousand is gone. So, really, when you're having these discussions, have discussions and make recommendations that come December twenty-four, it is spent. We know for sure it's spent. So, for instance, if you are wanting to allocate dollars for transitional housing property, then provide a parameter for staff to go find that, and we will find that for you and provide opportunities for you to look at different pieces for the dollars that you've provided for allocation, or whatever it is. Or, if, if you do those allocations, that's great, but then have a underlying direction to staff that says, any of these items that are unspent by November of, of twenty-four, council will pass a resolution allocating all of the remaining two eligible water capital projects, just as an example. And we know it's going to be spent, and it's going to go to help the water plant. So, that's the surety we need come, come December twenty-four.
Rob's on the phone. Star six, if you need to unmute, Rob?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, I appreciate having a deadline of November to essentially have the unused funds earmarked for something. I've got a, I guess, a quick question on the portable parklets, I realize it's a small dollar figure, but when it says assigned, twenty-four thousand dollars, JC, can you define what that means, assigned? Has it been absolutely promised, or are there, is there construction in the works for that? Or, what does that mean, assigned?
Counselor Pell, this is Mark Trinidad. So, essentially, we have, this parklet season, we've identified and ordered six restaurants. Each of those restaurants are granted up to an amount of four thousand dollars as reimbursables. So, presumably, those six restaurants will bring, if they are able to spend that amount of money towards the parklet itself, then the four thousand would be allocated at that point. We do anticipate that the construction of these parklets begin next week, and then we, we requested all reimbursables invoices from each of the restaurants in June, so we'll have a better idea of meeting that twenty-four thousand by then.
Okay, so basically, that money's essentially gone, it's been promised, it's been spent by the private parties involved.
Yes, it sounds like there's a potential.
I'm a little concerned with, today, we, you know, we discussed getting more information about the pool, and then, you know, forty-five minutes later, Joel was moving the one point two million for the pool, gone, killing it over and out. I mean, we just asked for more information, we didn't decide that we were going to defund the pool. So, that, you know, the rapidity that Joel was able to move from one thing to another is a little concerning to me. We were looking for more information, we weren't necessarily looking to kill it. At least that, that was my, my reason for voting yes, anyway. Maybe others had a different reason for voting yes. Anyway, thank you.
Joel?
Well, and I would agree with what Rob said, because we still have to make that decision. This is, be a tentative allocation, and it's also important that we look at that, because that's also the opportunity cost of rebuilding caveman pool as, out of this existing site, that you won't have these other things with ARPA. And I, I think we need to be aware of that for our community.
Or questions? Vanessa? No, go ahead with discussion.
I'm also in support of moving forward with looking for a transitional shelter or a homeless shelter site with the remaining funds.
I'll add, I mean, so far, four hundred thousand wasn't getting it done when we were shopping for an empty lot. And at this point, everybody seems to indicate that an indoor building or pallet shelters count as indoors, although, at this point, Mint is using the majority of the shelters that were previously purchased, so we would need to purchase, or somebody would need to purchase pallet shelters if, if a lot was what we were looking at. But I, I'm not sure that four hundred thousand dollars will get us what we need. Go ahead, Joel.
And I'm not sure either, so, and we're not going to know till we go into it, so there's going to be uncertainty with this tentative allocation, and we're going to have to readjust as we go. One of the things with industrial areas, you can put up fairly inexpensive, usable buildings that pallet shelters can fit under. And I've, I've lived in many fire camps for long periods of time where the infrastructure was temporary. And so, you can have those in, in industrial parks that don't have infrastructure, and then you can use that to leverage dollars with grants, hopefully to get that infrastructure, which then not only benefits the transition campground, but also benefits economic development for the rest of the land. And that, that is very socially acceptable, because you got two objectives. So, I, I think, you know, you look at an acre, two acres, three acre, whatever it is, I don't know, and that's yet to be determined, who knows? But then you put up some relatively inexpensive, but very utilitarian buildings, put shelters underneath them, have a great fire camp with cooking, showers, and waste facilities, and you're in business, and then you get your other grants from other places like the state to hopefully put in a permanent infrastructure, and then that also provides permanent infrastructure for economic development later on.
Yeah, I think, I think if you're so inclined, you could go ahead and direct staff to refresh our locations on possible shelters, because it has been quite a while since we looked at what properties are available, and then just, you know, leave it as an information gathering, you know, without a specific budget. But then, we also need to, you know, don't have to make any decision today on ARPA funds, but we could provide further direction on some of these if, if you were so inclined as well. So, kind of two different but related discussions there. Vanessa?
Yeah, I second that. I don't think we have to shoehorn ourselves into what the homeless shelter would look like right now. I think that we could put our creative hats on and look at available locations and go from there.
All right, well, do you want to ask staff to look for some locations? Bell?
Yeah, it sounds like that's what we're asking, is for them to look at the locations and what might be available out in the Spalding area, I think is part of it, too.
Brian?
I'm in favor of that. I do have a concern that two of the eight counselors are not here, that have been staunchly against that action, and that we might send staff off to do this work, and then we come back and there's not enough support to take any action. That is a concern I have. I feel it's a pretty legitimate concern, so I don't want to waste staff time if the whole council does not support that, that action. And I know that we can't resolve that right now, but I'm just putting that out there as a concern.
Rick?
I'm in for, in favor of staff moving forward on that research, but also, if necessary, to do a memo by email to the missing council members to get their input. Thank you.
Vanessa?
I understand your concern, but I think the majority, I would encourage the majority of council to support such an endeavor, because this is certainly the most heard from feedback from the community, asking us to take action on this type of project. So, I would ask the majority that's here, present today, if our colleagues choose not to buy in, to encourage them to do so.
Okay, well, it sounds like the group that is here today is supportive of at least getting an idea of what, what's out there available. JC?
Yeah, just for a point of clarification, are we okay to move forward from moving the two hundred thousand from the public safety communications repeater to the public safety communications equipment? It's pretty specific in ARPA that you have to show what projects you're actually funding.
Do you want to make a decision on that right now, or do you want to leave those funds flexible? Erin?
I think the mayor's asking a great question there, and to help you make that decision, maybe, I don't know if the chief or JC knows what our turnaround time is on purchasing the radios. Of course, if you're looking at wanting property acquisition, you're well aware that that's expensive, especially if there's potential infrastructure on the property. So, the reality is, we need the radios, but if council's number one priority is property acquisition, the more you have as, for potential allocation, is, provides more flexibility for us to look at a wider range of pieces of property.
Joel?
Well, I would go, I would be in favor of going ahead and expending those funds, looking at that we need it, and it's, it's an area of our budget that needs help in terms of capital investment and public safety. And we got plenty of flexibility with the dollars left to do the other things, so I would move ahead.
Brian?
Don't we have some shiny new utility fee dollars that could buy those radios? I mean, we're getting a three and a half million dollar a year infusion that we didn't have before. So, you know, we can't like spend everything on public safety, you know? So, I just, I've just heard about this today. The chief thankfully gave us a little bit of background, but I guess I'm not ready to make that commitment right now.
Rick?
I have a question for the chief. Do you see motion to help resolve the homeless situation with a campground making your job easier, or having radios?
That's a good question. But I, I think for this purpose right now, my response to you is that there's value in a lot of projects you see before you, and I don't think it would be appropriate for me to answer that question in the positive or the negative. But I can tell you that over the years, we have always kind of piecemealed equipment from an old vehicle to a new vehicle, and this would give us an opportunity to refresh the fleet with modern equipment that has been needed for years. And I, I think it'd be money well spent as far as the radios go.
Do you know approximately, I realize you purchase it different times, but is a lot of that equipment two, five years, ten years old?
I don't know the answer to how old the equipment is. I, I know we have radios in vehicles that range from, let's say, a five thousand series to the most modern series currently is an eight thousand series. So, there's a variety of different radios within the fleet. And I'm confident between the majority of the police vehicles and some of the fire vehicles that we could easily remove the oldest of those radios, which I would anticipate being the five thousand series, and upgrading them to the newer models.
Okay, thank you.
Joel?
And the other thing I'm thinking, Rick, it's not a matter of one or the other, we can do both, depending on the decision on the pool. We can have our pool, and, and we can then fund these other projects as well. So, I, I don't, I don't think it's an either or, as, as my fellow councilperson, Brian, said, we can do both.
I think he meant both pools. All right. Anyone else wanting to jump in on the, the radio issue?
Sarah, my hand's been raised for a while, this is Rob.
Okay, go ahead, Rob.
Yeah, so, you know, someone mentioned something earlier about how the, you know, the community, they feel that sentiment may have changed the community, that people may see the need now for some kind of homeless campground or shelter or what have you. And, you know, I, I feel that that may be those who are close to the situation, and that may be those who are educated. But I really believe that the majority of the city feels that if the Supreme Court, quote-unquote, provides grants, has a win, whatever exactly win means, people are, I think people are assuming that that means that we can just throw people out of the park. And when we are, if we have that as an eventuality, if the Supreme Court supposedly hands us a win, the public wants the homeless out of the park. And we are going to have to have a property, or some place, or some concept of what to do with them. So, while, you know, it'd be great to be able to upgrade the police radios, I mean, I think that come the end of June, the public is going to want the city council to solve our park problem, and I think that that has to be a very high priority, almost, almost in front of everything else as far as this year, and certainly, almost as any, in front of anything else as far as this summer goes. else as far as this summer goes. People just assume a win means that the homeless are going to be out of the park, that's what I, that's my take on it. And some pretty educated people I spoke with kind of felt that way, and I said, actually not. A win brings more questions, really, and it's going to require some creative solutions that's probably going to require us spending some money. So, that, you know, that to me is where I feel any excess from this list should be focused on in the near, in the near term. Thank you.
Erin?
I think Counselor Pell touched on a good point there, and his conclusion is a win at the Supreme Court brings on a number of other questions. And I think from the standpoint of messaging to the community, whenever this subject is brought up, we need to make sure it's clear that a win will, or a win or a partial win or something will provide us with additional flexibility to determine time, place, and manner on your terms and the community's terms. But the city and constituents and the community also, and I think this is where the messaging aspect comes in, we need to make sure we, and there are state requirements that require us to put time, place, and manner regulations for resting in the parks, in public spaces, and so a win at the Supreme Court is a win at the Supreme Court, but we still have local laws that have been implemented at the state level that requires opportunities for people to rest on public spaces.
And the 72-hour notice will still, still be in place because that is a state law, so regardless of what the Supreme Court decides, you know, I agree, I think it'll, it will give us extra flexibility, it will give us some hard choices. If we receive the right to exclude certain parks, I'm concerned about that driving the population into other parks, and so that's why I think it's really imperative that we get a separate location that we can encourage people to go to and provide some, you know, some rules there that allow people to stay longer than 72 hours at a time, and that, that in and of itself provides incentive to not have to be moving every three days if you know that you can keep your, keep your bed in place for, you know, a couple weeks or whatever, a couple months, whatever the rules turn out to be. So, I don't know, I heard a couple of you, Joel was in favor of approving the radio right now, but Brian and Rob both said, no, not yet. Does anybody else want to weigh in and say they're ready to make that decision, or shall we wait a little longer while we get some info about what else we possibly need to allocate this money towards? Valerie?
I think I'm willing to wait, just because, I mean, we've got this, the pool thing coming up in 30 days, that'll tell us a lot, but I think at this point in time, we need to leave all our options open and then make that decision after then.
Okay, Vanessa's also saying yes. Rick?
I'm willing to wait.
Okay. Joel?
I just wanted to go back to one subject and then be really clear. So, if we have a transition campground, it is not going to solve the problem in the parks. What it's going to do is those people that want a better way out can find a way out, and then, and the government will help them. But you're not going to have, even with the Supreme Court win, I don't want to give false expectations out there that all of a sudden everything's going to be like it was in the parks 10 years ago, because that's not the case.
Well, we, we don't know exactly what the court will decide, so it's probably best to not, but we will be able to set time, place, manner, rules, hopefully, you know, and so I think it may change significantly. I think we just need to wait a couple months, but we also need to be preparing for, for various outcomes. Erin?
So, based on, Mayor, what you've mentioned in facilitating the discussion in council, it sounds like there's consensus for us to look at available properties that meet criteria that we've discussed in the past. We will do so in a timely fashion, so we come back to you in an executive session to talk about potential property purchase, or whatever that may be, just have a discussion on opportunities for you, and we'll try to do so, like I said, in a timely fashion. If we can do it in 30 days or whatever, we'll do that, but I'll keep you posted and keep the mayor and council president and vice president posted on the scheduling for that.
Sounds perfect. Does anybody else have anything to discuss on ARPA? Nope. Yeah, Joel?
So, I still think that the swimming pool and the $1.2 million, tentatively, we should allocate that towards what I would consider higher priorities, especially given that we could possibly have the pool without that investment. And that would be in affordable housing and infrastructure that is listed in the handout by staff, and so I'd like to have just a short discussion on that, because, and it would have to be tentative at this time, depending on the information that comes back to us and the decision we make. But that has to be part of the discussion of the swimming pool, that $1.2 million, and how I can finance other projects that could be viewed as higher priority for this community.
Yeah, I think we've heard you say that, Joel, and it sounds to me like the other counselors are saying that because that discussion is coming back in a month, that we'll have the discussion about the pool at that time, and if we get to a point where we decide not to move forward with that funding or the pool project, we'll need to reallocate it.
Brian?
You know, I've heard a wise counselor many times say, we're starting to repeat ourselves, and the one I learned that from is the one doing it, so I say we move on.
I learned from a good mentor.
I think we're ready for a gender review, and I wanted to say, I had an oversight that I forgot to reschedule, I forgot to schedule an executive session having to do with the humanitarian services ordinance, so I don't know if Mark is planning on being at Wednesday's meeting, but it was just something that slipped through the cracks, so we do need to follow up with that with an executive session. If we could do it Wednesday night, that would be great, and if, if not, it's dependent on Mark's availability, so we'll do it at the next opportunity. But our next meeting is coming up Wednesday night, we have a public hearing, we have several public hearings, so the Baker Park Property Line Vacation, a hearing for an appeal of the HBSC's decision regarding a mural in the historic district downtown. We have an appeal of the Urban Area Planning Commission's decision of a major site plan review application regarding the Yoncer RV Park on Bridge Street. We have a public hearing for an ordinance that would have an annexation for the Midbrook Foundation, and we have a second reading on an ordinance that would annex the Buckmaster subdivision. Then we have a consent calendar with the findings of facts regarding the Parker Place Resource Center, and a motion that would adopt the monthly investment reporting, and an executive session on property. And then you guys will have a couple of budget committee meetings, the first two budget committees next week, and then our next workshop is May 13 with the HBA Home Builders Association. First, we're going to interview planning commission candidates, if they're available. Then we have the follow-up on private streets, and I'm not sure, it still says new topic, but we were going to consult with the Home Builders Association and see what topic we should focus on, so it looks like it still says new topic here, and then go over the first quarter work plan update. So, any questions on any of that? No? Do we have a new topic yet, Brad, that you know of?
We don't, we're kind of still going back and forth with the HBA on that.
Okay. All right, well, anything else, I guess, for workshop? I wrote down that we need to come back and talk about shelter properties as soon as staff can get a handle on what is the availability out there, and then we also need to talk about the pool and the Y partnership again in a month. All right. Guess that's it for today. Who wants to make a motion?
Bell?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Vanessa. All in favor of adjourning today, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, see you Wednesday night, we are adjourned.